Grand Forks, this is Monday, June 27th, 2022, Committee of the Whole meeting. Welcome and roll call. Weigl?
Here.
Dockler?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Mock?
Here.
Kwame?
Here.
Sandy?
Vean?
Here.
We have a quorum. Item two, action items, 2.1, special event, North Dakota Museum of Art Concerts in the Garden. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, Vice President Mock and members of the committee. This particular item came into our office last week. It's an annual event. It's the Concerts in the Garden. Matthew Wallace brought them forward to us and we're glad to have them back because they weren't, they weren't back with us last year. They did just one event, but they are back with us now and we are asking for you to approve and also to vote and approve because the first concert is going to be 5:30 next Tuesday, July 5th. Everything is in order. Everything that they need is here. We've got maps and everything. UND Police will be there to patrol as well as supported by anyone in Grand Forks PD.
I'll move approval.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? And a second? Any further comments or questions? And then just for clarity, this will not only approve but give final approval and final action as well.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item three, discussion items, 3.1, Highway 81 Development and 27th Avenue North Geotechnical Services, project number 8487. Good evening.
Thank you. This item is to do geotechnical exploration. This is basically drill rigs that they go out there and they do corrings of the soil to various depths, different locations. Some of the deeper locations we've got are, you know, 80 feet deep on like say a lift station. So we went out and we solicited two different quotes, one from Braun Engineering, one from TerraCon. They're both local reputable companies that do this kind of work. Again, the area is out there on essentially the Highway 81 area is one area of work and along 27th Avenue North of specific concern and the most immediate one is the, we need to get soil information for the lift station, the pond and some of the deep sanitary sewer runs that are going to service that area. The other two locations are at the wastewater plant and the water plant. Again, just getting the geotechnical exploration for the final design for that. So we did have two quotes. TerraCon was at $99,000. Braun Engineering was at $84,780 and we are recommending a ward of the work to Braun Engineering at $84,780.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
I'll move approval.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
One second.
A second, okay. Mr. Vean, did you have comments or questions?
I do have comments and questions on this one here. I understand exactly what you're doing and why you're asking for this approval as we go forth. My concern is we have a number of issues that we've talked about. I know many of them are being addressed in the development agreement, but I feel like before we get into the process of starting construction, I think, and the data for construction, we should be addressing or have better understanding of these other issues. And this isn't really for you, it's probably for Todd, the mayor, as we go forward, but I appreciate the involvement that I've had so far, but on things such as the raw water, odor, flume, traffic, it's, I know those are coming, but I feel like we need to have some level of answer to those questions before we start implementing the processes of construction. So that's what I'm, where I'm after. It's more, it's not against what you're doing, but we should have figured and have some answers to all those that I know are coming, but they're not here yet. And I don't feel comfortable starting out with this process until we have the bigger picture addressed. So I just want to make that comment known that that's what I'm looking for because this is such a lengthy process. It is more detailed than any project that I can remember and I'm looking for some of that information before we would now get into an implementation phase. I still think we're in a understanding and data gathering phase, so just my comments.
Can I ask a question of Mr. Vean?
Of course.
So help me to understand, this is an evaluation and I thought that, for that reason, I thought it was appropriate for us to, that this is part of the information gathering. And you're suggesting that this is part of construction, not, not just information gathering?
This would be information necessary to design the project.
Okay.
I think Council Vice President.
Yes, Mr. Vean.
I think there's another option. This city council has annexed the Highway 81 area and so with the intent of improving 27th Avenue North with building a wastewater pump station, I think right now there's going to, we're proposing a domestic station for that area along 81 and then there'd be this larger industrial facility, not only that would serve Fu Fang, but would also make, serve other industries like Simplot in the area. The stormwater pond is going to go in as part of the Highway 81 development. The wastewater treatment plant, we're already going to make those improvements. So all of these improvements are going to occur with or without Fu Fang, I would say, except perhaps the industrial wastewater station, but all the infrastructure is going to go in. We've annexed the area, we said we're going to serve them. So in order for us to start bidding, designing and bidding this work out here this winter and into the spring, we need to start doing some of the geotech area. The other thing as you did is we've had a lot of discussions on this letter of credit. I would say a lot of this is just going to go to the Highway 81 area too, but we have a letter of credit for reasons of moving forwards, early out things, knowing that we can't wait here until January and then decide we're going to do some geotechnical work. We need to do it this summer so that we can proceed forward and know what we have.
Mr. Grasser, how, is there a shelf life for geotech work that the DOT accepts? Since a lot of this would support that Highway 81 corridor, is there a shelf life for when they'll still accept a geotech report?
I'm not aware, you know, the geotechnical things usually don't change really over time. I'm not sure that there's particularly a shelf life to them unless somebody was digging or doing something out there unusual that would make the old data questionable.
So something like environmental documentation usually has, you know, some sort of period of three or five years for when they would accept it, but this would probably, once done, be done?
I think the difference is, is that, you know, the geotechnical is a fact base. It's a drill and a hole that doesn't change. The environmental documents have a lot of moving parts. They've got different public inputs and they have cultural evaluations, lots and lots of different things that go into an environmental evaluation. And sometimes the rules that you would be following, you know, going into a project may change over time. And so I think all those dynamics tend to come together to make a, you know, an environmental, give a shelf-like life to an environmental document. Again, that's, that's different than the geotechnical where you're, you know, going down and sampling the soils, you know, especially as you get deeper and deeper, there's not much that's going to change there.
And if you didn't do that until after all of those other studies were back, what would the concern be?
These, the engineers that are, that are working on design need this information in order to finalize the design for the ponds, for like slope stability, side slope stability of the pond, things like that. You know, is there a perched water table? If there is, how high? You know, there's a lot of different things that this will help identify.
And if Fu Fang didn't happen, would we still need to put in those stormwater infrastructures and that?
Yeah, you still need, even looking at Highway 81 as a separate area, again, what we're building is a domestic lift station that basically serves only, mostly, almost only that area. The stormwater pond, again, there's a large component to the drainage area that, that's Highway 81 that you're bringing into the pond. So these same types of things are needed. The pond might get bigger if Fu Fang is there versus not, but you know, the basic design and the function of the stormwater pond is going to be the same. I would just also highlight this city council approved a annexation agreement with SNS Transport that you've spread throughout and our obligation is to work in good faith to try to meet their deadlines for their, their development of one of which would be the stormwater detention pond would be the potable water supply and the wastewater pump station. All are going to need it as part of their development. So you've committed to moving, moving projects along and this is the first step in moving them forward.
Follow up comments, questions from the council? Mr. Vean?
Yes, please. No, after Ken, please.
No, I, I understand what Todd and Al are saying. I think there's, there's very much validity for me. Again, for me, this is just crossing that line. I really want to know what's happening with raw water, odor, the flume, traffic, solid waste and wastewater collection and treatment. Those are some things that I know we're going to get to, but we're not there yet. And so that's why I'm not in favor of this, so.
And I'd just say for the record, we are in, just so everyone understands this, most of this infrastructure and most of where we're going to do these, this geotechnical study are, relates to infrastructure we are going to do with or without Fu Fang. And so that's the importance of us moving forward and that's the importance of why we annex not only the Fu Fang site, but the adjacent area along Highway 81.
Mr. Weber, did you have something additional?
Yeah, thanks. We've been saying for months now that we had a development agreement that set up a process for us to gather information to make sure that we want, we're in good shape to move forward with this project. And increasingly, it's not going to be a black and white line that something is gathering information and something is actually doing the work. And it's also not always going to be a black and white line between something being done for the large development here, Fu Fang, and for the realities of our responsibilities now that we've annexed that. So I'm trying to understand where that line is and it's not always going to be a clean line, but I'm still hearing evaluation samples. This feels like information gathering to me, but Mr. Vean, you're saying no, this is something different. So I'm, I'm still trying to understand what this step is and where it is on which side of the line it's on. So one thing we're being told is that this would be necessary for annexation regardless of Fu Fang. Are you skeptical of that? Is there some reason for us to believe that that's not the case?
Mr. Vean?
The information, I think I'm really accurate on this, is going to be necessary to complete the designs. You need to do certain amount of data gathering to do designs. Soil, soil strengths, all of the things that they're looking for are critical to do design and they're right. Some of them may or may not be a part of Fu Fang and so I'm not arguing that at all. I mean, I think everything they've stated is factual. I just said, I just don't feel comfortable because I think, I think some of this is crossing that line. That's all I'm saying.
I'm hesitant to, I'm sorry, Vice President Mock, I'm hesitant to vote contrary to you on, on an engineering matter like this. I respect your expertise, I always have and, but it, I don't understand where it's crossing the line on that yet. Can you, can you help me to understand that or is it, is it beyond my technical abilities to understand here?
The, that's why I said some of it would, does not, some of it would. I'm looking probably at 27th Avenue North. We have no intentions of doing 27th Avenue North prior to this that I'm aware of, but it became a part of the project. The wastewater and that, we were planning to do, although the timing has been moved up, we wouldn't normally do that yet. That's where, and with the annexation, as I'm hearing, some of this was being, maybe being planned. I think Todd has tried, has explained that pretty well.
Yeah, I would say, I would, if you look at the two maps, there's a map for WFW and if you look at where those core samples are going to go, they're going to go along Highway 81 and that will be primarily serving, I suspect, the potable water that's going to be provided. You see borings along 27th Avenue North. Again, we've said we're going to have water main, we're going to have sewer in that area and we're going to improve 27th Avenue North. You came up with the 80/20 cost here. A lot of the Highway 81 businesses are relying upon that 27th Avenue North being completed as part of that. And then you see, you see several along the, where the lift station is going to go, known as 49 and also along with a detention pond. And then you see, that's the WFW one, then you see an A2S one and that one is depicting areas around the wastewater treatment plant. And again, we've said over and over again that we are intending to do the wastewater treatment plant. So these are, these are again borings around the wastewater treatment plant that we had already planned. So I think, I'm not going to say every one of these are for, are, we wouldn't do without Fu Fang, but I'm going to say the vast majority are going, needing to be done regardless if Fu Fang is developed at their particular site as we move forward.
And while we're doing, most of them, we should go forward and do all of them. It's, there's a cost benefit in that?
Yeah. I think the other thing is, as was noted with Al said, the geology is not going to change. The only thing you'd want to make sure of is that we know where the various infrastructure components are going to go. So where we put a boring in, it's, it's in a reasonable, accurate position. I think we have really good concepts of where things are going to go, so I don't have that worry that we're going to be doing borings in, in areas that are not going to end up being a stormwater detention pond. I would ask you to move forward this evening. Thank you.
And of course, this is Committee of the Whole, we're making a recommendation, we get another look at this next week. So we have a week to look into it further.
Yep, this is Committee of the Whole, so this would be the recommendation. And there would be another chance at council next week, I guess. You know, Mr. Vean, I think, I think I understand your hesitation and I do understand that there is, I can understand the hesitancy to move forward with something and respect that until we have all the answers back. I guess, you know, somewhat in this line of work is you know very well, you need the information in order to design. And so, you know, I, I understand and I do, there are intricacies, of course, something like the wastewater treatment plant, all of those development, all of that development is needed in time. We are changing the pace of that time because of this. And so, you know, it's kind of a delicate, it needs to happen regardless, but we are changing the timeline somewhat based on this proposal. I do think that regardless, there is a certain level of gathering that data will be there for whenever we're ready to use it. And because of the annexation, we will probably be looking at these pump stations and road You know, maybe as you said, what 27th is probably different, Highway 81 was probably something that would happen in time. So I guess I'm more inclined to say that this doesn't necessarily advance beyond where we are with those studies being able to come back as kind of the primary drivers for decision making. This seems more like aiding the ability to design for core infrastructure, which I do understand your point that we shouldn't move forward with that until we're ready, but it does seem prudent to do that while you can get those samples and have them. Mr. Grasser?
Perhaps one last comment, I'll get into some of the philosophy, pardon me, Todd. But you know, when you're in a subdivision, one of the things that you really need to get done first are the really deep things, right? You need to, when you dig a hole 20 feet deep and you, and you have to make the side slopes to make those things safe and stable, it takes a big footprint. So you need to get the deep stuff first before you put in say a water main that's eight feet deep and ends up inside of another trench. So it kind of drives you to doing the deepest stuff first. Almost by definition, that's almost always the sanitary sewer, which means you need to figure out where the lines are going to go and you need to have a pump station to pump it, to take it to. These things have to, I'm going to go back to some of the discussions with SNS, you recall there was some very significant concerns about can we get water to a building that they're planning on building? If you work the problem backwards to get the water to the building in the timeline that they're looking at, we need to get the sanitary sewer in first so we can come back and put the shallower water in to serve that building. So all of these things build into a timeline and a continuum because we really can't do the water first. We have to go do, and so that's why we're starting out with the deep, the trunk, the sanitary sewer. And again, the pond, there's reasons for that is because with our wet weather, it's best to build those in winter time. You can kind of work with the frost and keep your equipment from not getting buried, et cetera, et cetera. And some of the discharge line from the pond is, is pretty deep. So we're starting with the deepest stuff first so that we can come back and get the, get the things in shallow, shallower elevations. And again, on Highway 81, you're going to have the sanitary sewer and the water main probably in fairly close proximity because the DOT, I don't think is going to want to have those utilities spread way out. So really, again, this is, this is more for serving the Highway 81 area. If Fu Fang was not there, we'd be asking for, I mean, 95% of the same borings just as a Highway 81 infrastructure development.
Any further comments or questions? We have a motion, a second.
Just, I suspect Representative Vean, that we're going to be voting differently tonight, but I, I think that overall, and I don't think either one of us are opposed to the project at this point, but we are both feeling the weight of our responsibility to make sure that the process is in place to honor what we've been saying about the development agreement all along. And so we're going to be watching for, it's not always going to be a clean line, but we're going to be watching for efforts to expedite the process that feel like they're moving beyond approvals and starting on construction. I'm, I'm not feeling that that's the case with this yet. We can discuss it further or we can gather more information over the rest of the week. But with, with that, I'm finished speaking and I'm ready to vote. Thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
So two dissent, three in favor and two dissent, is that correct? All right, item 3.2, federal funding request for transportation alternatives program, project number 8540.
All right, we're going to go all the way to the other end of town now, so which is a good thing. These are, this is a request to apply for transportation alternative funds. Most of the time when we're applying, when we use that term, it's, it's almost always a bike path. There are exceptions and other opportunities in here, but to simplify the discussion here, we're really talking about bike paths. And we do a TA project kind of every year, every other year, and you've heard us say that sometimes we wonder if it's even worthwhile getting some of this money from the DOT because by the time we go through their development processes, et cetera, et cetera, it costs us almost as much as if we did it ourselves. Well, an enhancement and change that's now just come through the North Dakota DOT, one of the things that always hamstrung us a little bit is that the projects were limited to $290,000 of federal money. So it meant you had a fairly small project and so then your development costs and things proportionately are always higher, right? Because you're, you're losing some of the economy of scale. The DOT's new program takes the cap off of that, 290,000. And so what we're looking at here is, is doing a project that otherwise was going to probably be done in two or three different phases. We're looking at the 48th Street bike path. If you go out there today, we've extended the bike path along 32nd all the way to 48th. When we built 48th Street, we put in an aggregate bike path in there anticipating, you know, future coming in and making it hard surface. And so under that 290,000 cap, it would have probably been a two or three phase project to get from 32nd up to basically 17th is where we're at. But with this taking the cap off now, we can get from 32nd all the way up to 17th in one run. It makes it about a $1.2 million project, a little over, but we can actually apply for, under that scenario, we would be looking for $890,000 of federal funding. We are taking an optimistic view on this that, that given the fact we can scale this thing up, we'll have less percentage, proportionate percentage of project development costs and also that maybe we can get a contractor in there and get a little more economy of scale on the construction side. So we're hoping that percentage, if you look at our estimates, we're about, about one-third local cost, two-thirds federal, which would be a big improvement over something that generally runs a little closer to 50/50 or maybe 60/40. So with that long explanation, and there's a, there's a short deadline on this, they're going back and reevaluating the 2024 requests. So this has to be into the, and approved by the MPO by August 19th. So at this point, we're asking for authorization to proceed with that application to the DOT.
Comments or questions?
Move approval, move approval, sir.
Motion in a second. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 3.3, reimbursement resolution for lift station number 48. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, Vice President Mock, members of the committee. The item you have before you is the consideration of a reimbursement resolution for a sanitary lift station number 48 in Forsme, project 8217. This has already been bid and ordered, we just need to satisfy the technical requirement to be eligible for various financing mechanisms by approving the resolution that is attached. And this just sets the maximum amount of principal at four and a half million and it just satisfies the IRS regs for being able to finance. And we will look at different state programs as well as traditional revenue bonds to see what would be the best solution. With that, I would just ask to move forward for approval.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Motions? We have a motion, is there a second?
Sure.
And a second? Further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 3.4, approval of Title VI LEP plan. Good evening.
Good evening, Vice President Mock and members of the committee. This is our, every three year process we go through, having the Title VI plan that we have to have based on race, color and national origin about using federal dollars and then also a limited English proficiency plan, providing documents in different languages for individuals that do ride the bus service. So, and every three years we'll be coming forward with this process again.
All right, comments, questions, motions? We have a motion, is there a second? Anybody want a second? Oh, there's a second, yeah, Mr. Vean. All right, seeing no more comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 3.5, PSAP Director Employee Agreement. Good evening.
Vice President Mock, members of the committee, we held the 911 Center Director Process on June 8th and we initially had four finalists, but right before the process, two withdrew, we did proceed with the process, which consisted of a formal interview along with a presentation. Thank you to Councilmember Weigl for participating on the selection panel as well as Chief Lorenz, Sheriff Snyder, Sharon Lipch, our Public Works Operations Director, Chief Clark from UND Police, and then Casey Inman was an At-Large Authority Board Member and Deputy Chief Brett Johnson was there as well. After much discussion, our internal candidate, Shannon LaHayes, was selected for the position and before you tonight is that contract. We're asking that you approve the employment agreement as attached and the city attorney's office has reviewed this contract as well.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Motion? Or a motion by Mr. Weigl, is there a second? And a second? Comments or questions?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Vean?
This is probably not unexpected, but this is a contract versus civil service.
With this position, it is a joint powers agreement between the city of Grand Forks and then many various entities, including like the county, UND. So this position is a little bit unique in that sense that it is, I don't believe it can be classified due to that joint powers agreement.
Does it vary similar to the public health, where that's a joint powers between the city and the county also?
I believe so. Mr. Phelan?
It's similar in this way, just to kind of go back. So the public health department does, is a city-county public health department. All of them are city, all of the employees within public health are city employees. In this case, it's similar in the sense of all the employees In this case, it's similar in the sense of all the employees in PSAP are city employees. The difference is they under, the PSAP operates under a joint powers agreement, they have an authority board that operates their day-to-day things because they have UND, they have the county, the city, and others. And so it's a little, it's not exact, but it's similar. I would say the other board that's, it's similar, but the county rules is our emergency management. Those employees are county employees, they have a board, we'll say that. I think Mr. Councilmember Weigle's on that, but that's the reverse where the county actually leads that. I would say this PSAP board is, has more of an authoritative authority board than the other two, whether it be public health or emergency management. I'd also highlight, I think, in our most recent history with Becky Alt, and I think her predecessor, they have been contracted department heads. So this has been a contracted department head position for, you know, 20-plus years.
Thank you.
Okay. We had a motion and a second. Are there further comments or questions?
Yeah. So who would pay for this position? Because a joint powers agreement isn't necessarily line of supervision or pay. Who pays for it?
Sure. Council Vice President Mock and Councilmember Weber, we all pay. So I think the city share is around 55% to 60%. County has a cost share, UND, others have cost shares. And it's all per an agreement, a number of calls, and where they come from, and who's responding. And so that's what kind of entails the joint powers agreement. They do have a board. Again, Mr. Weigle serves on that, too. There's UND representatives. But ultimately, at the end of the day, it's in your city budget. And so we house that in a similar vein where the emergency management, where we're paying the county of Grand Forks for our emergency management portion, that ends up in your budget as line item, but they're dealing with the budget day-to-day.
Is there a change in the nature of the contract for this new hire from what the contract that Ms. Alt operated under over the last 20 years? It's the same?
Councilmember Weber, hi. No, there is no change. It is very similar to our department head contracts, and then it actually mirrored Ms. Alt's contract as well.
Yeah. All right. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 3.6, rental program update.
Council Vice President Mock, Councilmember Dockler asked for this to be placed on the agenda. Mr. Basfoul cannot be here this evening, he did submit a memo later today. Essentially, what we're working on is that, working with the city attorney's office, there's been some change over there, but I think he's enlisted the Board of Appeals as part of looking at what we can do. And so I think we're a little lagging, I would say, to Councilmember Dockler's point of bringing the code that is referenced in this. There's an adapted code that we can put into the system, and so he's going to work through his board to see if it makes sense or what part of it. So he'll work in earnest here in the near future and working through that board, hopefully bring something back to the city council as part of an update, and see if the city council wants to move forward with an augmented, added city ordinance with a city code that would also take a look at some of the things that are concerned in some of our rental properties.
Comments or questions, Ms. Dockler?
So I appreciate that this is coming forward. It is four years in the making to have an update on this. I am leaving tomorrow is my last meeting, and so I encourage the rest of council to continue at this, and to also look at creating some type of policy to have a structured review for it, whether it's every five years, or 10 years, or whatever. It shouldn't take 20-plus years for a program to be looked at and see how it's actually impacting the communities that it's supposed to be serving. This is a passion project of mine. I'm certainly not disappearing, even though my council term is ending, and I look forward to working with people from Ward Two and the current council at the time to continue moving this forward. I do think that we had a more robust phone conversation probably a couple of months ago about what actual pieces were going to be updated legally than what appears in this report. So that does sadden me a bit that you don't get to see a more defined version of what we are talking about. I'm sure that's because I'm not a lawyer, so I'm sure it's because we want to make sure what we put out there is exactly what we want before we do anything. But I do think that it is something that the next council needs to keep at the forefront of its radar, if anything, just because it is a significantly growing impact within the north-end communities, and that it is also going south. Our Grand Forks, the city continues to sprawl out southward, and so rental homes, single-family homes continue to be flipped. And if we want to have an honest conversation about affordable housing across the city, not just the north side, but across the city, then this conversation about rental properties and the oversight of them needs to be at the forefront of that conversation.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Mr. Weber?
First of all, Representative Dockler, thanks for pushing this forward, for working on this for the last four years. I'm sure that Citizen Dockler will remain involved in this. In the meantime, I don't know if there, you've indicated that there'll be some update to council at some undetermined time in the future. Was there any process by which Ms. Dockler was receiving regular updates? Were there any regular meetings on this? Could I, I would volunteer to step into that role if there is such a role.
Council Vice President Mock and Councilmember Weber, I think we did have a flurry for a little while, and I think over the last few months, it's slowed down a little bit. So I think we need to get ourselves re-engaged this summer, it's probably a good time to just go out and check out the neighborhood and what's good and bad and otherwise. So I think obviously Ms. Dockler will be replaced by Ms. Osowski, and so we want to make sure we engage her as that's her ward. And we've had some meetings over the last four years, and some of those have included Mr. Weigle, too, since they're adjacent to one another. So we'll emphasize to Mr. Basfoul to pick up the pace and re-engage and keep moving forward as soon as possible.
Last time I checked, there were rentals in Ward Three as well, so I would welcome the opportunity to be involved in that. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. You didn't need a formal motion just to want an update.
No, no. We said we'd bring back. So we will, we'll ask Mr. Basfoul to come back here in a month or so and give you an update and where he's at. So mark your calendars by, what is it, the end of July, we'll be back here with an update.
Okay. Thank you. Item 3.7, project work plan for indoor sports facility and indoor aquatics facility update.
Council Vice President Mock, well, this is, this one's actually kind of fun, if I can say that. It may be a little bit full of joy. So I'm really honored to have Jill Nelson, who is the Director of Operations and Community Relations of the Grand Forks Park District. And so she has been our primary contact regarding this particular feasibility study that's just been kicked off, and it's quite an exciting thing. And I want to, I want to thank, you know, Mr. Weber way back in the day when we did market capture. And so I think from here, we've got a few items that are about our quality of life, and not only about, just about our quality of life, but how does our quality of life investments drive our economy and drive our community? And so today's a really important part. And, you know, even though I was a little skeptical of this market capture, really the market capture study that we did identify, really identified where our gaps are and where our strengths are, and where our deficits are. And one of our deficits that we're going to talk about upcoming here is in facilities. And I think really the city's interest in, Ms. Nelson's going to come up here, our interest was not only driving our quality of life from a workforce perspective, also driving events to our community because we know they're a large revenue producer that brings in sales tax. And when the city of Grand Forks brings in sales tax, that means we can invest in primary sector and other things that really help drive our community. And I just wanted to give you a highlight. Ms. Riggs from our visit greater Grand Forks highlighted this, in June, we had a sales tax, and it was almost $3 million for the city of Grand Forks. And that's for April's activities. And so when we look through events that were really the high-flying events, the biggest high-flying event in April was the Grand Am basketball tournament. And so I don't think we should ever forget that, you know, we have concerts and we have things like that, but some of the best revenue producers that had the best turn in our community, our events, where families come to town in our 300-mile radius and come to tournaments. And that's just one reason, when you look at April, what was the major reason for that. In addition to the, all those reasons why we should want to do that, you know, the market capture study pointed out three things, as Mr. Weber really was our city council member that helped shepherd that through and was part of the committee, is that we have more and more young families in our community, and we've been able to return, retain a lot of folks that are in their 20s and 30s, and we want to make sure those people that are in their 20s and 30s eventually become 40s and 50s and 60s in our Grand Forks. We've done a really great job, we should be very proud of that. Number two, that youth amenities are a great opportunity to attract visitors. And so when you looked at that market capture study, our circle around Grand Forks is about 300 miles, and the largest percentage of people that come into our community on weekends for events are in the Minneapolis-St. Paul area. And so that's an important note. The other part of this group that comes from within this 300-mile radius are generally the more affluent members. They're, that makes some sense, you know, they're in sports, they're participating, they're coming to town, they're going to have to spend money. And so that was the other thing that we found out as part of this, part of the study. And then finally, when Grand Forks is hosting events, whether it's during the week or on weekends, it drives the whole economy. It drives retail, it drives hotel, and it drives restaurants. And so during this, this last month of our hotel-restaurant tax, it was the highest one we had ever. That got reported here in June, and it was $70,000 for this month. So that's, we're used to seeing 40,000 to 50,000, and so when you see 70,000, it shows that we're driving a lot of events to our community despite some of the workforce challenges we have in our community. And so the, from the administration, the Mayor Bochensky's perspective, what we want this to be is what we said with the Grand Forks Park District, let's do a feasibility study. And we have offered up within our spending authority of 50,000 for this particular study. I know it's going to be a $100,000-plus study. Let's try to get it done as soon as possible so we can get some results, let's make sure we engage community members as part of it, but let's get to action. Let's get to an end, and let's start moving forward. So you're going to see as part of this budget process this year, Mayor Bochensky and the city administration, we're going to try to come up with a solution, a funding solution on some of these projects so that we just don't put something in a binder and we don't get to action. So really, our intent is to work with you as the policymakers, as our board directors to try to get to results. And we should really make a distinction, you know, park district is city government. In most states and most communities, you would, it would be under the city, but we have great partners, and the park district is city government. And the reason why that's, I think, really special in Grand Forks and other communities in Grand Forks is that we have better parks because of it, because we don't, because the city of Grand Forks, we do what we do well, and the park does what they do well. But I think for the park district to move forward with some of these incentives or these investments, they're going to need the city of Grand Forks to help lead and help invest because that's what we do. We have to take the heavy burdens of this community and try to deliver excellence, and that's really what we want to partner with that. The other group we're partnering with is the school district, because there's an aquatics feature on this. We're going to engage UND and others as part of this, too, so it's, and all the community groups. So with that, it's an exciting time. It's early on, but we wanted to get your feedback sooner rather than later as we start down this process in July, so it's really an exciting time. So with that, I would ask you all to take over from there. And Ms. Mock, there is a presentation, so it might be easier to, if we could maybe dim the lights, pile, easier.
While they're doing that, Mr. Phelan, I know Jay Cleven and others have been trying to do something like this almost privately and stuff, and this is kind of how this has evolved, is that right?
Yes. And they're one of the survey respondents, so instead of frustrating people out for years and years, our, really our goal is to work with you and come up with some results that we can actually take to action.
Thank you. Good evening. You're welcome.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you, Todd. Thank you, Vice President Mock and members of the committee. I appreciate you having me here. Yes, so I'm with the Grand Forks Park District, and we have been partnering with a whole bunch of different groups, including the city, the school district, as well as UND, just kind of look at what are the needs that we have here in our city and how can we provide those? So here's a quick little overview. Okay. So to give you some context on how we got here, I'd like to give you just a little bit of background on how this all came about. I've been with the park district for about 10 years now, and ever since the first day I started there, I've heard about the bubble, or turf, or just needing more indoor amenities so that people can be active year-round. Obviously, we have Choice Health and Fitness and some other great facilities, but there are some, some gaps that we need to fill, and we see that. And as more cities around the country, and even within our region, such as Fargo and Sioux Falls, are building indoor complexes, this idea has gained more and more momentum. They see a lot of great economic impact from it, and then just really great quality of life, keeping people in Grand Forks, as Todd was saying. So last year, the city and the park district got together to discuss how can we make this possible, and why couldn't Grand Forks have this? And that led to about a year of information gathering. Last year, beyond the many brainstorm meetings that we had with the city, we also met with local associations and user groups just to get their input. Our goal is to involve everybody and just get some initial feedback of, do we need this? What are the amenities that they think that we're missing? And kind of the wants list, more than even just the needs, like what do you want to do with your association? How many tournaments do you think you can have? You know, think about storage, do you have that? Just all these different factors, and we created a grid that I believe is provided for you all. Again, it's very primitive, but at least gives us a starting point to see what are people looking for? What are these associations looking for? We also had meetings with public entities, so UND, the school district, the city, and the park district started talking about the state of our current facilities. And they're getting older, they're starting to fall apart, as you know, and so we just tried to see from all these discussions where would, where would this go? And it came about, there were two main needs. One was that there was the need for a multi-use indoor turf and courts complex with a track, so a multi-sports complex. And that would be like a turf facility that you could have soccer, football, lacrosse, softball, baseball, all within. One, you can have it separated by nets, and you can have multiple different groups playing at different times. Also, courts, having basketball, volleyball, pickleball, and other different activities within the same courts area so that we can separate it again and have more tournaments and have more needs. The second need was an indoor aquatics complex. So with the high school pools in rough, one closing, and then the other in pretty rough repair, and then also hislop at UND, there's some serious repairs needed, and they're looking at the shelf life of a few years until they have to close it down or figure out something better. So we've all been discussing this and seeing what's the most appropriate action forward. And with those lack of aquatic facilities that we currently have, it's only going to get more prominent later on. So what's the next step? Feasibility study is how we felt the next step would be. If we're going to move forward, it needs to be in a very informed manner. So between February and April, we had the RFP process, there was interviews, we had a selection committee, and essentially our park board ended up voting to hire Barry Dunn, who is nationally known in the parks and rec industry. They have worked with Chicago, LA, also Fargo, Bismarck, Williston. So they do know our area, and they are fairly informed. And the idea of this is not to build the facility, but tell us what's possible, what's plausible, give us a pro forma, and really like a work plan of what's, what can we really afford and how can we continue to sustain this? So they have a bunch of different partners, whether it's Water Technologies, Inc., RRC is a statistical analysis group, and then Green Play as well. So the research goals of this whole thing, what are we trying to achieve from this? Well, first, we need public input. So that would be focus groups, online surveys, statistically valid survey as well, that might take, make it take a little bit longer, but we feel as though it's needed because we know that local sports associations want this, but does the general community see a need for this and want something like this? Also, location assessment, identifying locations that will have good access, and just site planning, where could this possibly be in Grand Forks? Also, facility design and concepts, and again, by that I mean schematic designs and just overall concepts of what's needed, not the actual architectural designs. And give us some projections of the cost of what this would be. this would be. And sustainability, creating that pro forma for sustainable success. The timeline for this, we already had our kickoff meeting and the information gathering. July through October, we'll have public input, demographic analysis, site analysis, conceptual plans. And we'll also have a website that's set up so that the public can be involved every step of the way. It'll explain the process. They can also take the survey. They can make suggestions, polls, that sort of thing. We really want it to be an information gathering and very transparent, so the entire community can be a part of this. If they're not just randomly called for the survey, we want everyone to have the opportunity to have their voice heard. The group Barry Dunn will actually be on location, I believe, July 12th through the 14th. So within a few weeks, they'll be here, meeting with different focus groups. And we'd like to reach out to you guys to see if you'd like to be a part of that. And then also, of course, user groups, general community members, stakeholders, that sort of thing. We're going to try and have a wide group of people. In November, financial assessment, operations model presentations. And hopefully in December, we'll have a final plan and recommendations. And really, at the end of the year, we're hoping to have some viable research to help guide us and confirm the need and public desire to move forward on a project like this. And that's kind of a quick summary of where we're at with our feasibility study. Does anyone have questions?
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Mr. Weber, it looks like you have a question.
What's needed from us tonight?
Council Vice President Mock and Council Member Weber, just some feedback. And understand that communicating better where we're going, and this city council is going to be extremely important through the process and at the very end to move forward with action and partnerships with our park district and other groups. So wanted to let you know sooner rather than later.
Thanks. Let me start. Mr. Mayor, thanks for your interest and support of this. For all the reasons that you've already mentioned, Mr. Phelan, quality of life, economic development, workforce development, we also, this would provide year-round recreational opportunities. You've mentioned it, but I think it deserves some emphasis that our current situation, the current context, is getting dire. We are losing all of our swimming pools in this community. The remaining pool at Hislop slated to be gone, possibly in short as a few years, and in need of repairs at this time. So let's hope it lasts those few years. So my only concern about what I saw is not till December, but I realize that this takes time. And I'm fully supportive of us finding ways for the city to support moving this forward. You've got the right players at the table. I didn't hear school district, but then I did hear school district. They need to be included here. I don't know how much they'll be able to do, but they'll be an important player. And that's all I have to say, is if you're looking for a general green light from council, then I move for support of that green light at this time.
Further comments? Mr. Gavami?
Just a quick question. As a city, will we be able to share all the public engagement opportunities? How can we make sure that gets out to as many folks as possible? I think, you know, with the school and the city and the park district, if everybody can use their resources and get really good engagement, I think that would be key.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We'll definitely keep that in mind when working with the consultants, and we will reach out and utilize the community as much as possible. So thank you.
Mr. Dean?
And I just want to support what Mr. Gavami said. I think public engagement, public involvement, I think we've learned a lot and need to somehow make sure that we create something even like the Blue Ribbon Commissions that we've had in the past, which brings others in on the process too, as we look long-term. So I'm anxious to see what you guys come up with.
Thanks.
So this is largely focused on the public engagement and the public need, essentially. And then are we going to use that information to help inform, maybe design, or what would be included, or how to design it to meet the public, you know, wants and desires and kind of what their need is for turf space? Is that kind of the idea?
Yes, absolutely. So the first part is public input, but then we utilize that information to really take those next steps, to say, where would the site be? What would the layout be? What is the great access? And then also, you know, what are the capabilities? Because this would be a very great resource for sales tax, of course, and other opportunities like that that would be generated because of tournaments that would be coming into town and other things like that. But we don't want to overstep or, you know, wish it and then hope it comes true. We really want to be smart and strategic about planning this and making sure that whatever we create, we can sustain and really have thought through the operations and the long-term. The short-term decisions that we make will make some really good long-term impacts for our community.
Yeah, I think this is, I mean, it's important to do this baseline data so that we're making all of those informed decisions. Or when we're making those design plans, it's kind of based on the need first and the public input first. Mr. Weber, did you have something?
Thank you, Vice President Mock. You mentioned you're getting this information sooner rather than later. You'll want to, of course, you already know this, you want to be careful about how much you let out as you're gathering information, because if there's an indication one way or the other, you might anticipate that there will be some naysayers who will be opposed to this. But I suspect overall, this will enjoy tremendous popular support across the city. If there are moments along the way between now and December where you're looking for a place to get that information out, there's a few people watching even now. And I'd love to have updates along the way. And if that doesn't happen until December, I understand that also.
Wonderful. So a great thing is that we have consultants, national consultants, that have done hundreds and probably thousands of these feasibility studies. So they'll be able to guide us on the proper way of how much we release to the public and at what time. And they'll be kind of guiding us along that process. But yes, I think I'm open to any input whatsoever, and then I will relay that to the consultants and see how they feel as though that would be appropriate.
Thanks for taking on this work.
Thank you. We appreciate your partnership.
Thank you. One last point that would be interesting, I guess, in sort of the data gathering phase. It would be interesting to know what exists for facilities in terms of like gym spaces and even school district or Y-spaces. And then you don't demand versus gym space and how that plays into the overall need of the community. Because, you know, sometimes you get those where they're just packed from very early in the morning until late at night. Or maybe there are some other resources that could be good partners going forward into the future where you have underutilized gym space that could help with other needs or, you know, if we can't fit everything into one facility, that we develop some of those partnerships that would be long-term.
Thank you, Vice President Mock. I really appreciate that. And I 100% agree, having that inventory assessment of what do we have, and maybe we have enough facilities, but are they being utilized and at what times? Because obviously, you have your heavy traffic times, and how do you fill those gaps? And what do you do with that for programming? That's always on the mind of the park district when we're operating.
I would imagine so.
Absolutely. I think having that inventory assessment to start with is key. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Phelan, that was just an update, so that was just for information.
Thanks for the feedback. And we'll have ongoing updates through the study too.
Great. Thank you. Item 3.8, Public Arts Commission update.
Kurt, you're on.
Good evening.
Thank you, Vice President Mock, for letting us have this opportunity to present quarterly year/mid-year report on the update of the three public art projects that we have. For the record, my name is Kurt Kruen. I reside at 3111 Longville Court in Grand Forks. The first project that we have is the Public Art Documentation and Registry and City Vibrancy Campaign. That part of it is the part of the art documentation. We, as the PAC, have contracted with local artist Greg Vettel to head this part of the project for us. PAC also has partnered with the Smithsonian Museum Art Collection Registry and UND Collections Director to expedite the registry project. This project is approximately 25% completed on there. For the next part of the six months of the, to finish this particular portion, now that the weather is a little nicer, Vettel is able to continue documenting artwork and take some really good pictures of what's taking place in the art portion of our city. This is the portion of the work that really takes a very long time to get it done right, and he'll be working on that for quite a while. The second part of the first project is the City Vibrancy, the Grand Art Campaign is that we have. PAC has partnered with the Visit Greater Grand Forks, now known as the VGGF, to execute this project. The VGGF has valuable staff and resources to assist us with this particular campaign. PAC has also partnered with Grand Magazine staff to help us execute the graphics and promotions. No reimbursement of funds has been requested for this part of the project since the campaign of Part Two can only begin when the completion of Part One has taken place. So that'll come a little bit later. The second project that we're working on is art galleries and events within the city and mainly public or city-owned buildings. PAC is currently hosting the Bruce Jovi Collection at the Art Exhibit on Display at the L.A. Center for Public Viewing. With the renovation of City Hall and the former Herald Building under construction, there hasn't been much of an opportunity to equate space available to host an exhibit or an event at those locations. The plan for this fall is, PAC has been planning with the city administration to host a large venue at the City Hall when the renovations are completed. And then we'd also like to work with grand opening for the renovations, when the renovations are completed, at the Herald Building as well, so that we can work with that portion of it. The third portion of our projects that we've had was the capital infrastructure and maintenance portion of our work. PAC is in the process of finalizing the sidewalks, the benches. We've had signage, and then the replacement and installation of the maintenance of low-maintenance rock landscaping that will take place for the Northern Rose Public Art at 42nd on there. We took out the old stuff that wasn't quite adequate, and are putting this new in right now. Our plan to finish that is in the next six months or so is to complete the Northern Rose landscaping project this summer. We want to get that done. Also, once the public art documentation project is complete, that's a very important portion, PAC plans to create a priority list of public artwork restoration needs. Then we'll get approval from the city administration or the council, whichever it desires, to receive approval from the city on artwork to be restored. And PAC can then manage those projects for the city, list projects that list while contacting and contracting with local artists and with service providers to complete this maintenance. And hopefully, we'll have that done in that period of time. The only, you have a packet in front of you. The only changes that we've made from what is in your packet is on the financial area over there. We are now in contract with CPA McKenna and Associates to prepare the 990s and our year-end reports. And the reason for that is the individual that was doing it, the CPA that was doing it before, she sold her company, and the company moved out of town. So we are working with them. With that, Chair Mock, that ends my report. And hopefully, it's good enough. You've got a lot of the information in front of you, so if there's any questions, I'll try to answer them. I have a couple of board members in case for reinforcements if I need them.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Item 3.9, Children's Science Museum and Destination Park Overview and Grant Request. Mr. Phelan?
Council Vice President Mock, another fantastic opportunity of greater good in our community. Under this item, I'm going to be joined by Ms. Miscavige. She's going to come up here and provide you a briefing regarding the children's museum. I just wanted to provide you some background this evening that goes into this particular grant request, similar to, you know, the thought about courts and all those sorts of things. It's going to be hard for some of these projects to get into the end zone without the city of Grand Forks. And this is going to be one more example of what the community needs from your leadership on behalf of the city council. So this evening, really, what the heart of the moment is, is there's a grant request. And it's a United States Department of Defense grant opportunity. We're calling it the DCIP Grant, which is the Defense Community Infrastructure Pilot Program. And it's administered out of the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation. And so there's a lot of acronyms. But what you should know is really the wonderful part of us being here as a community with the Grand Forks Air Force Base is an incredible story. And the incredible story is, in the mid-2000s, around 2006, the Grand Forks Air Force Base went through BRAC. And we didn't get closed, but we got realigned. So we were the R in BRAC. And I'm going to say we're the most, the Grand Forks Air Force Base in this community is the shining star of realigned bases. And realign, I think at the time, realignment really meant you were on life support, and eventually you would pass on. But it was just an easier way to say you were going to get closed. The great story of Grand Forks and our tenacity and our partnership is we didn't let that happen. And partly, this United States Department of Defense organization that works with communities, they were with us in realignment throughout this process. So when you see Grand Sky Development out there with Northrop Brumman, General Tomics, and other, you know, beyond visual line of sight and all those sorts of things, that all started in 2006. And it started with help from this organization, the Department of Defense, that was really intended to help us get realigned, find our new way forward. And so when you've been around here for a little while, and you see where the Grand Forks Air Force Base is with a new mission coming, with the Space Development Agency having an announcement this week, with all the great things that are going on in Grand Sky, what a moment in time. And it took the community working with the Grand Forks Air Force Base to get us to where we are today. So today's an important point because it's about a, it's a P3 partnership. It's a partnership with the local community and its government. It's a partnership with the Grand Forks Air Force Base and that government. But it's also a partnership with the nonprofits and private sector, too. And so it's truly a P3, and what an exciting opportunity. But with this grant, they need the city of Grand Forks as a support on this. And so it's really an honor to work with people like Ms. Miscavige, who has such passion for community, similar to Mr. Kruen, similar to Ms. Nelson. And so these three projects are really important because they really provide some inspiration for our community, because it's really community members that are trying to build our community up. So with that, I'm going to ask Ms. Miscavige to do what she does so well and provide you an overview of the requests this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Mock and council members. What I want to do is just go over the first floor slides. And then if you have any questions, you can feel free to ask them. I hope you had a chance to review the materials that were sent, along with the letter of support from Wing Commander Colonel Curry. And we're really excited about this project. We're still in our private campaign phase. We're trying to secure donors and going through a private campaign. And like Mr. Phelan explained, what we're trying to apply for is a DCIP grant through the Department of Defense. Minot Children's Museum received a grant in 2020 from the same public law, and the submission deadline is July 18th. And we're going to be requesting $8 to $10 million for a Grand Forks Children's Museum building and facility. The requirements are listed The requirements are listed here, and as you can see, the one in bold, it must be owned by a state or local government or not-for-profit member-owned utility service, which is why we're here today. What we're asking for is for the City of Grand Forks and the council to approve the City of Grand Forks to file the DCEP grant and submit it on our behalf. We're asking the city to accept the Altru Health Systems land lease, that was announced in the paper last week, and also the city to accept ownership and lease back to the Children's Museum Group. And it is for an undetermined amount of years, but can be less than the 30-year requirement in the grant. And then if the city council is willing to allocate matching funds, which Mr. Phelan could perhaps talk to. So, does anyone have any questions?
Council Vice President Mac, again, we have additional slides, so if you're interested in more of the visuals, I'm sure Ms. Miscavige would be willing to go through that presentation that is attached to your staff report. I would say this is conditioned on approval from the Finance Department and also importantly, our city attorney. There is a land lease there that has come from Altru, I'm just using, I attached it as an example. I would certainly know as part of this that I would, if you're so inclined to move forward with this lease with Altru, that Mr. Gostad would work with their legal counsel and have it, this lease be subject to that approval. The dollar, when this group came to us, is what funds would be available that a city council could consider. The 1.8 million dollars that I have noted in the staff report, that comes from, as you recall, we, as part of, we received CARES funding as part of the ongoingness of, from the state of North Dakota. And we have 1.8 million plus that we set aside in Fund 2163, which is your Economic Development Fund. And because that was money that we had left over from the CARES funding from the state of North Dakota, that we had a wide ability to invest that fund, we did place that into 2163, so we'd have flexibility. We did kind of put it under quote-unquote "quality-of-life" investments that we may want to make into our future. And so as part of the staff recommendation, Maureen and I talked, so we have placed that if we were going to match, provide a match conditioned on receiving this grant, that that would be the funds that we had set aside for a moment like this in that 1.8, just so you know where that comes from as we move forward. I would say the other thing, this is really going to be competitive, because these grants are intended to partner with the local community or state. It's intended to not only strengthen the community, but obviously strengthen the military installation, in this case, the Grand Forks Air Force Base, in providing military readiness. And you know, when we often thought of military readiness, it has to be for fighting, all those sorts of things, but it's about having family readiness, it's about children's readiness, it's about educational readiness, so that we can continue to attract well-qualified airmen and their families to Grand Forks, and that will want to come here because we're a great community, they want to come here because we have great educational systems, we have great healthcare. Those are going to be the leading indicators for us to continue to grow and get new missions, is that we have to be a great community to accept missions here. And this children's museum really goes at the heart of that in this case. And so it is competitive, it's only 70 million dollars across our country, they are annual grants, so that if we're not successful here, hopefully we'll continue to work to be successful. But there's a lot of momentum, and this is a really great opportunity, but really highly competitive, too.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Vice President Mac. The last thing I would add, probably the last ask, would just be, as we look at how we're going to fund some of these sports facilities, the turf, the aquatics, the courts, I think if we could wrap this up as all part of that, as we look to how we finish, how do we get all these across the finish line? I think putting them all together and finding ways to fund all of them, I think this children's museum is, if not more important, at least equally important as all the rest, especially when you talk about the winter and things to do for kids and children activities around here. So if you'd consider that as we move forward on some of these sports projects with the Park District, that we can wrap the children's museum up as well on that, some of those funding options, so, thank you.
Can I ask a really high-level question? Do we coordinate as a state? We said that Minot received it, do we coordinate as a state so that we're only putting in one or two applications, or does every city just put in applications as they have projects available?
I think it's been, you know, communities with facilities like Minot, I think, number one, we need to get our lists ready, what we found out, we need to have shovel-ready projects that we can move forward, and this is a great example. So this shouldn't be our last one, hopefully we'll continue to move these forward. And if we've been anything, we've been a little behind the curve as we move forward. And we just want to be able to submit really great projects and be competitive.
So if I'm hearing this right, essentially, we need to consider support for the land lease, although the actual lease itself would come back to a future council meeting for review and approval. So we wouldn't be approving it, we would just be discussing support of that. And then the matching funds, again, we wouldn't be approving the funds, but we would essentially be supportive of those matching funds, and you have kind of a designated area for where you see that coming from, if we would get it. And then submittal of the grant, that it would be submitted by the City of Grand Forks, prepared by the children's museum essentially, but then submitted by the City of Grand Forks. Those are the things we need to consider in terms of support.
Yeah, Councilwoman Mac, I think you are correct. As part of the motion, we're asking conceptually to approve, you know, those several things as part of the staff recommendation. If we do receive the grant request from the US Department of Defense, we'll come back here and then formalize all that documentation. And in the meantime, I think, as me and your attempts was saying, the 1.8 million is really meant to kind of cede this opportunity contingent on the grant request. Obviously, with the facility that they're looking at, even with an eight to 10 million dollar request, they're going to need additional funds, and as we move forward with the other study, let's wrap this in here as part of the overall need for all these projects.
Okay. Comments or questions, Ms. Webber?
Vice President Mac, thank you. First of all, let me say, I'm in support of this, for what it's worth, I'm very excited about it, thanks for all of your work on this. And then some comments and some questions. Comments, the history of the relationship with the base that you described, Mr. Phelan? It's worth recognizing the hard work of the county and Tom Ford, and moving forward with the work out there with Grand Sky. Also, it deserves mention that our federally-recognized friendliness towards the base as a base-friendly community, this has been an important initiative of yours, you've helped drive that for several years now, and it's paying off, thanks for that. And wow, what a great base commander we have out there right now in Commander Curry, and so having him be supportive of this is also a great part of the story. The matching funds, what part of this are we matching with the 1.8? What is the 1.8 that the city would be matching?
You don't need to show a match for the grant, because we're a community smaller than 750,000.
Okay.
But in Minot's request, they did show a match, and we do think it shows a healthy, so we're trying to get as close to what we're requesting, and we're just finalizing costings with our architect firm, and what that eight million, what we're going to ask is about a third of the building project costs. And then so it's just showing that, you know, just to help us get closer to that match from where we are in our fundraising.
So the word "match" is kind of, it's a soft "match," yes, okay. And I'm guessing it's driven by the 1.8 that we have in federal funds. One thing that I would hope that we might consider, it's nice to have the feds give us a bunch of money to do work that we should be doing anyway, but I think that the city should also just step up and do this. This is a genuine economic development issue, a fantastic one, provides, again, workforce development, direct revenue benefit in event spending, et cetera. So I would like us to consider maybe using some of those CARES funds, but that there, we also have economic development dollars from the city that could go into this, that's probably another discussion for us to have. I know that we all like to keep these meetings short and not stretch it out, and I don't want to put any pressure on you, but you've got an audience right now, and I think it would be worth taking a few minutes. This is a big deal, and we're kind of speaking about it in almost hushed tones here, this is a big deal, it's a big investment from the city. Would you mind, you know, I've had the pleasure of getting to meet with you, and I think I have an understanding of this, and people could go online to watch this on their own, but would you mind taking a few minutes and helping us all understand what it is that you're talking about here?
No, not at all, thank you. What we're talking about is really, we have a vision, and it's a vision for a project for our whole community, not just for children. And it's a STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics, or music. And it's a STEAM facility, and then we've also been looking at it as a place where our community can gather. So half of the project is looking at being designed for those STEAM exhibits, primarily your elementary-age school child would be interested in these, you know, play-based, open-ended learning. And then the other half of the space would be programming and event space. You could, you know, host a club there, you could have lectures, you could do cooking courses, we're looking at having a home act area where people can teach cooking classes, and just a place where people can gather. The land that we're looking at is adjacent to Choice Health Fitness. You know, Icon Sports Center brings in 170-some thousand people, your choice has high traffic, and we're thinking it's just an excellent facility, it's accessible by bike path, it's accessible by bus, and it's on, with that and the adjacent land that's owned by the park districts, is a total of 18 acres. And so we want to have it just a excellent space for outdoor activities, outdoor programming, and then really start marketing Four Seasons Outdoor Play, so we can see children outside in the wintertime playing and activities, and, you know, there's no bad weather, just bad clothing. So hopefully, we can market that as a city, and there's some tourism dollars available for marketing these types of projects. And we secured a $100,000 tourism planning grant, and we just got some of our initial concepts back, and so I guess I could flip through some of those, so you can kind of see where we're headed. And I guess the need, I always think this is so funny, because I grew up in Grand Forks, I have small children, and it's just like, we need this. If I have friends that come to town to visit, it's just like, you need a place to take them and a place to go. And we have, you know, sporting facilities and different things, and have a need for some more, but we really have a need for this, so I always think, it's hard for me to go through these. There is an economic demand for these projects, when people come to town and stay longer, they spend more money. This is the land that I was speaking of here with Choice Health Fitness, and then the adjacent properties, it's a total of 18 acres of land.
And the center and park that you're talking about there, well, you were going to talk about it in the next slide.
Yeah, so the master plan is to partner with the Grand Forks Park District, which we have, and they have reserved that parcel of land for a destination playground. And this is a playground, we're thinking roughly $5 million for an ADA-accessible playground, and have this just be a destination where families could spend a couple hours at. And it's a great facility adjacent to this, that'll be free and open to the public, and a wonderful facility, and I think they align well in that location as well.
And we've discussed this, eight to 80, that this is a playground both for small children, but for adults.
Yeah, zero to 100, yep.
Zero to 100?
Hundred and one, no. We want to have outdoor fitness for adults, too, that you can kind of get on and move around and just encourage activity in, for everybody, encourage outdoor movement, encourage just getting out, and hopefully we can get some paths and different things available for people of all ages and abilities. Our concept we kind of came up with, that we felt was really embodying our region, was land and sky. And so we're thinking a two-story facility, the bottom story can be on growing, the top story can be in the sky, and all things to do with sky. And we really think that, you know, Grand Forks is defined by plentiful land, dynamic skies, and that there's interactive experiences that can kind of play on our regional strengths, and that we can tie it to either one of these. And, you know, you can explore, play, and learn while developing children's sense of belonging. And then this is just some visions on the outdoor destination park, and the Park District did do a master plan and identify this as a need for our community. And then this is Toboggan Design, who we've consulted with our North Dakota Tourism Grant, that you might be familiar with, the Winnipeg Children's Museum, they helped design that facility in across Wisconsin, which has a similar size as our community. And these are just some of the initial concepts of the two 7,000-square-foot STEAM exhibit areas. And so that play-based learning, you can have a place for, you know, you can learn about the river, the habitats, you can have a building area, you can, in the sky, you can learn about wind aerospace, and you can really tie this to the airmen and women, you know, Grand Forks Air Force Base, and how do those, how do the drone technology work in partnering with those communities? Multi-level play structure, one of the things we've talked about is maybe you could even have a big GF defining it on the outside, and maybe have a big huge play structure that looks like a giant, like, you know, have a G gallery and a big F play structure. So there's just some fun, different things, and how can we learn about planting, going through the river maze, and so it's really exciting and fun, and we're just in the initial conceptual development processes of it. Of course, a place for toddlers to go, a place for a quiet room, a quiet discovery place, and learning about water and the flood. Then again, about the sky, and we've talked about being more of like, what does it feel like? What does it feel like to touch a cloud? What does it feel like to be flying in the airplane? Not your traditional, just put a cockpit in and sit in it, but what does it feel like to fly? And what's that experience like? And so it's trying to be just a wonderful experience. And also having an area to rotate exhibits, so that people that are in the community are having something different and can come to openings, and they will have events, so that people come to the community for the events that are being held at the facility. This here is just, I think just as important as the exhibit space is the programming space, and that really is bringing in, you know, the different demographics from just children, is this programming space where you can learn about hobbies, you can teach things, maybe you have an interest, and you'd be able to rent out the space, have birthday parties, event rental, studio programming, and just kind of like make your space flex areas, which takes up about half of the space. And this is our Board of Directors, and some of the initial partners that we've made. We have a great facility in town here, Dakota Science Center, they've been doing children's museum programming for 30 years, and what they're missing is a space. And they've been partnering with us, and we've been trying to partner with as many people as we can, so we've been in our private fundraising, and then private, trying to make as many partners and find people to help us with the project. So if anybody's listening and wants to help, we want helpers, we're all volunteers, and we're just trying to get this project complete. And we have raised privately quite a bit of funds, we have a couple million-dollar donors, a half million, and I think total, we're at about 3 million in cash donations, and with our land and in-kind gifts, we're at close to 10 million.
Wow. We're all sitting here politely, kind of stone-faced and just listening to you, but this is incredibly exciting. People like yourself have been working on this for a long, long time, I think it's something our community needs. I didn't remember that you were including a Toboggan Hill on this. We love to complain about winters here.
Great idea.
And yet, when you go to the greenway in the middle of winter on the coldest days, and that little hill is just covered with kids, so you could put something on top with snowmaking, and then there'd be a place for them to go in to get warm. Okay, I don't need to.
I love it.
Okay, great. Thanks for walking us through that. So I started by saying, I support this, I'll end with, I support this, that's the place.
And it would be great in our grant request, I know that we're listing the dollar amounts and who's supporting it, and so it can be contingent on us getting it, where if we got it, it went away, but it would be nice to have a dollar amount to show what the city is willing to put forward if we did get this grant.
Mr. Phelan?
Yep. Vice President Mac, maybe I'll read you the motion that we have in front of you. Number one, we're seeking your approval to do, number one, for the city to submit the Defense Community Infrastructure Pilot Program, the DCEP grant in the amount of eight to 10 million. Number two, city land lease with Altru. Number three, city ownership of the Children's Science Museum. Number four, city consideration of future and potential leaseback to the Children's Science Museum nonprofit until the nonprofit can take ownership. Number five, contingent on the DCEP grant approval, the city contribute up to 1.8 million dollars in economic development funds, 2163. This recommendation is subject to final review and approval of the Finance Department and the City Attorney's Office. That's the motion, and the one last group I want to thank is Maureen Storsted, Candy Stern, and all the finance people, because they're going to help submit this. And one of the joys of working for the City of Grand Forks and the administration is just people take on more and more for the greater good of the community, and that's what they did in this case, too, so I want to thank them also. So I want to thank them also.
Recognizing that it's listed here as 1.8 million in Economic Development Funds, not necessarily, not explicitly tied to the care funding, I'm happy to make that motion.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Oh, second, I have a question.
Okay, and then a, yes, go ahead.
So I just had a question, I apologize if I missed it. Do we understand, is the city going to be responsible for ongoing operational costs, capital maintenance, repairs, things like that? Who's going to, who's that going to fall on?
That's going to fall on the 501(c)(3) and so right now we're working on our operational budget. They aren't, you know, when you study children's museums across the country, they aren't great operating budgets, but we're trying to build in an endowment, a large endowment to help with operating costs and then partnering with granting and other operations. And so we're not making an ask of the city for that.
So the city would not be responsible for repairs should they be needed?
Correct.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions?
I think I had kind of the same question, I think. We need the operating pro forma at some point in time to know what that's going to look like and make sure that you were taken care of because this, along with the athletic facilities, are really amazing projects to have come here. And we want to support them, but I think we ought to know the whole package and the whole picture, so, thank you.
Because we have the word vibrancy, I do hope we have some of the notes from that work that we did a few years back. And I remember both the Winnipeg trip but also the Colorado trip, there were some really good models of partnerships with parks and destination parks and some of that. So I hope that we have some of those notes to help. It seems like a lot of thought has gone into the planning, but I do hope, you know, we have some of those things or even those communities to look back on for how, you know, those things were structured and how they designed some of those facilities. Because I think that was part of why we looked at those, for those examples. So it seems very relevant as we look at a project like this. And I do think, you know, several communities, Minot Fargo, you know, and others in the surrounding regions have similar facilities. So I would assume that we're reaching out for partnerships for exhibits so that we're getting, you know, new content for people and, you know, those types of things. I would think that would just be natural partnerships. Any further comments or questions? Otherwise, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll pull the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item four, electric scooters overview and request.
Council Vice President. Mock, one more call, I think, I'm going to consider this quality of life too. We have the electric scooter request, and this is coming from Bird, which is a electric scooter company. And I'm hoping, we have a virtual presenter in Michael Cavato, and I have his presentation up here. It looks like Michael is here, so. Michael, I have your PowerPoint up currently and I'll help drive it from my location if we can choreograph with one another.
Sounds good to me. Very much appreciate the assistance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of council. City staff really appreciate you having me here. I do have a brief presentation that I can run through, which I hope will answer most of the questions, but certainly would love to make sure I'm available for a Q and A session following. Next slide, please. So as was mentioned, I do work with Bird. We are a shared electric vehicle company specializing in what they call micro-mobility. Those are the modalities that are best suited for trips that are less than five miles. So that means electric scooters, e-bikes, that sort of thing. We were founded first in 2017. We're the first company in the world to introduce shared electric scooters and have since grown over 400 cities globally. Our mission here is to solve the first last mile problem, help reduce congestion, and generally improve quality of life within cities. Next slide, please. The way that our system works is very similar to some of the bike share systems you might already be familiar with. Individuals will download a mobile application on their phone, see one of our devices either through the map functionality on the mobile application or throughout the community itself. They are required to create an account where they go through a safety tutorial, which includes a quiz to make sure that they've paid attention. They're then able to scan the device, meaning the scooter, take it where they need to go before hitting a button to end their ride. At the end of their ride, they are prompted to take a photograph of the scooter to prove they have parked it appropriately. Once that is done, their trip ends, somebody else comes along, does the exact same thing. So multiple short trips per day per scooter. Next slide, please. All of our scooters are speed capped using our geo-fencing technology and GeoSpeed technology at 15 miles per hour. That is roughly what your average amateur bicyclist travels at. They're also all equipped with a headlight, running lights, brake lights, and taillights for increased visibility, and a bell for audible signaling. On the right-hand side, you are seeing an example of a safety decal, which includes our 24/7 contact information, important reminders that we offer to our users to ensure that they are using the scooters in a safe and community-friendly manner. All of these scooters are self-standing with their own kickstands. Next slide, please. Thank you. I do want to be very, very clear, we are not seeking any subsidy or investment from the city at this time. This is something where we cover all of the upfront and ongoing costs because of the popularity of the system and the small per-ride fee that we charge our users. We do think we can be profitable long-term. One of the things that is very important for us is to have an ongoing relationship with our community partners. This includes UND and the city. For that reason, we have a dedicated account manager, somebody that all city staff and all university staff will be able to reach out to at any time to make any adjustments to the delivery of our services on an ongoing basis. For example, if there is a special event, it takes us about 15 to 20 minutes to update our geo-fencing parameters. Those are the digital boundaries that control where the scooters can and cannot go. So it takes about 15 to 20 minutes to update those, so certainly your account manager can work with you to ensure that scooters are never going into a location where they shouldn't be going. Next slide, please. What we have found to be particularly effective is to actually work with local members of the community to engage in the day-to-day field operations. So this allows us to create some primary, direct primary economic benefit through small business creation that has no upfront fee, no fixed fee, and no termination penalty, as well as a substantially positive return. What this means is that Grand Forks has the confidence of knowing that there is somebody locally based who knows the community very well, who's full-time small business, is to engage in the deployment, rebalancing, just a fancy word for moving the scooters from places where people have ended their ride, and recharging of the scooters. At the same time, this means that we can rapidly correct anything that might require a reactive approach as opposed to our typical proactive approach wherein our fleet managers check on every single active unit multiple times per day. Next slide, please. There is considerable benefit to alternative transportation and in particular, e-scooters. Almost 60% of our trips do end in front of the small business. The average take-home for our fleet managers is a little over $70,000. This includes cities where there is an oversaturated market with multiple providers and thousands upon thousands of scooters. Given the fleet size that would be appropriate for Grand Forks, and given that there is no other shared mobility provider, oh, I apologize, there's the bike share system, which we can integrate within our app. But given that there is a limited shared mobility system currently available in Grand Forks, I do think there's potential for it to be substantially higher. Finally, Emory University released a study last year where they found that every single individual e-scooter contributed roughly $1,100 in additional spending at local businesses over a six-month period. Just to make my math nice and easy, what that means is if you have about 100 scooters within the community over a 12-month period, that's almost, that is over $200,000 in additional spending at local businesses that otherwise would not have occurred, directly attributable to the scooters. It's a great way to help stimulate the local economy. Next slide, please. Because we were the first in the industry, it does mean that we've had an opportunity to hone our technology to a significant degree. All of our scooters are equipped with what's known as an IoT device, basically a GPS connected to numerous sensors that allow us to engage in geo-fencing and GeoSpeed controls. This allows us to create an operational area that the scooters will have to be in in order to actually be used, as well as controls of what speed the scooters travel at within that area. For example, if it were appropriate, we could reduce the speed specifically on trails from that 15 mile per hour cap down to say 12 miles per hour, 10 miles per hour, or anything that the city thinks would be appropriate. We were the first in the industry to also introduce what we call our helmet selfies feature, which is a way that we encourage safe riding behavior. At the end of their ride, an individual can snap a photograph of themselves wearing a helmet. We have an AI feature that can detect whether they are wearing one, and if they are doing so, they receive a credit to their next drive. This is done in combination with an ongoing helmet campaign where somebody can request directly through our mobile application or through our company website to have a helmet shipped directly to their door for no charge other than $9.95 shipping and handling. So certainly a good way to ensure that they are accessible. Finally, we have a number of parking management features available to us, including preferred, incentivized, and even designated parking. So we can encourage individuals to terminate their ride in a particular location with a simple reminder or offer them a credit for good behavior such as 25 cents, a dollar, or any appropriate amount to their next ride if they do bring the scooter to a particular location. Again, for special events, we can even designate key areas that are geo-locked that individuals must go to in order to end their ride. Next slide, please. As we heard that some individuals feel a little bit uncomfortable when they first hear about scooters, we introduced our warm-up mode available on some of our models of scooters. What this does is it reduces the maximum speed and acceleration of the device for a new user until they get a little bit more familiar and a little bit more comfortable, at which point it will gradually increase up to that 15 miles per hour, just to ensure everybody feels confident when they're first using them. As a large number of our users are indeed regular commuters, and we will actually give the city access through real-time data dashboards to that information, so they'll be able to see not only the number of regular commuters, but all of the trip data, heat mapping, et cetera. But for that reason, we introduced our Quick Start feature, based off historic riding patterns. What it will do is will automatically unlock a scooter as somebody approaches it if they have consistently demonstrated that they are using this as their regular commuting vehicle. Functionally, the way people use these systems is public transportation. That's one of the reasons why we want to introduce the data dashboards that we provide access to the cities for. So certainly this is another good feature that I think will allow for visibility and accountability with Bird. I hope I've kept that brief enough, that just around five minutes, I'd be more than happy to answer any specific questions from the committee here if it would be appropriate.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
Maybe if I could ask one of the questions is, what would we have to do to implement the system? So if we could call on Mr. Gostad to give us a summary of that and then I bet both would stand for questions.
Of course.
Thank you, council members. There was a memo that was attached to part of your briefing. There'd have to be some changes to the ordinances to allow these things to be within the city. We think it falls within what's called a recreational motor vehicle because that definition includes motor scooters and those can't be on sidewalks, you know, in certain areas. So there'd have to be some change in the ordinances to allow for these things to be used in the manner that has been described. It appears that it's more likely going to be, we've got uses of recreational motor vehicles under City Code 81201. We'd propose to just add 81202 to deal with these electric motor scooters if you wanted to go down that path and then define what those, those rules and regulations. For example, you've got to be over 18, things like that, that would be imposed. We want to make sure that it's not like a bicycle because those can be used in, you know, high-traffic air roads that you may not want to utilize. And he's described that GeoSpacing technique to try to limit that, so we'd want to make sure that those are included within the ordinance. And then with respect to the memorandum of understanding, there'd have to be some changes with respect to liability coverages by this entity that provides us, it can't be exclusive, things like that, that we'd incorporate if you wanted to go down that path. So we've only outlined changes that would be necessary. We have not actually started drafting until we had some sense as to this is something that the council wanted us to do. Be mindful, it takes two readings, so this is not the first reading. And we'd have to come back at the COW and then there'd be a couple more city council readings of any ordinance changes to implement this.
Comments or questions? Yes, Tommy.
All right. So I think this question is probably for Michael. I've had positive and negative experiences using different rideshare devices in different cities. And I think, you know, I think about, you know, St. Louis or maybe Lincoln, Nebraska, where you see them kind of littered all over the place and it's multiple brands and they're just knocked over. And then I've gone to, you know, a university campus in Texas and they had very specific designated spots where you had to park them, you had to take a picture, just like you said, and prove it. And it was really organized and it was not a detractor from the community. So I think, you know, your abilities to incentivize parking, I think is perfect, but I think we need to, I think we need to be really diligent because what I don't want is just every corner to have one knocked over because they didn't care about a quarter. So how do we set up the proper zones to be designated for parking? And then again, how do we make sure that we manage that so that we avoid the situations where I've seen where they're just kind of knocked over, littered on the corner? And maybe, how would you handle that?
Excellent question. So we have a number of solutions immediately available. As much as you don't want to see clutter within Grand Forks, I don't want to create clutter within Grand Forks. So certainly I think we are aligned in that respect. The first and the easiest solution is to start with a small fleet. By having a limited number of devices available initially that we gradually scale up to the appropriate density so that this can be a reliable public transportation system, gives us a very good handle on where people are using these, gives us some really good data in terms of being able to ensure that we are creating the incentivized or the preferred parking areas that might be required. Creating those too early, I think you really limit the benefit of the system as this really is meant to be a point A to a point B public transportation network. One thing I do want to make sure I stress, in general, almost every state and almost every municipality boils down to treat these as they would a bicycle. So certainly encouraging them and treating them, and I know Mr. Gostad spoke to limiting some of the roadways. I don't envision these being used on the highway by any means, but certainly I do think it would be important to allow for that. So small fleet that scales gradually with full visibility from the city staff to ensure that we are keeping up to the commitments that we have made would be the first way. Second way would be having our locally-based fleet managers. We've already identified a number of individuals within the community who have expressed interest to us that I think are probably known to council, who can be, who are locally based and whose responsibility is checking in on these devices proactively, making sure that they are not knocked over. Within the MOU, we can also include some language around the response time for any reactive notification. So if somebody were to use one of the multiple communication channels that are available, including our customer service telephone number, email address, or community mode, which is available through our mobile application and is an industry exclusive, which are important issue to us, our fleet manager will go out there and correct that issue within X number of time. To that end, we've also worked pretty extensively with other municipalities in terms of finding key areas where there tends to be a little bit more traffic to create some of those digital parking areas that you referenced earlier. Certainly, given the adaptability of our technology, we can very easily create those after we have a little bit of data to understand where people are naturally taking them. I hope that answered the question. If not, I'd be more than happy to provide some additional information.
Yeah, that does, I appreciate that. My last question is just, has the university been engaged on this? Do they have awareness? Have there been communication with them?
I'm very glad you asked. Not only is the student government very enthusiastic, but we actually have a signed and executed agreement with the university already to the provision of our services. So they're fully on board.
No further questions. Thank you, appreciate it.
Pleasure.
Further questions from other council members? Oh, yes, Mr. Webber.
Vice President Mock, yeah, when the city council met with the student senate, this was probably one of their biggest asks was they were looking for city support for this. I do share Representative Cavami's concerns about them. I've been to cities where they're, you can't get in your hotel door because they're laying out on the sidewalk. So anything to do, to address that would be, is necessary, not just appreciated, needs to be done. I'm guessing along Washington, we wouldn't want these out on the road and a multi-use path makes sense there. On the other hand, I would prefer to not see them on the sidewalks downtown. I think that it's legitimate for them to be in bike paths and share rows where those are explicit and where they're just implicit. are explicit and where they're just implicit. So I would hope that we would set it up so that they're not on the sidewalks downtown and in similar places. Thoughts there, Mr. Gostad?
No, I think, and, and it wasn't suggesting that this was appropriate to be on Washington. The concern is we should put in rules that these are not to be on, so that we have some enforcement mechanisms if we see somebody riding down those roads. And, and all of those locations and uses and who can use should all be incorporated within those ordinance changes.
Yeah. I didn't think that you had said the opposite. I was just emphasizing that, yeah. But I mean, on, on university, I think that the share row, it's very appropriate for them to be on the road there. And in fact, having these kind of buzzing around downtown, I think, provides some traffic calming, which is also a benefit, so, thanks.
Mr. Veen.
Is this, would this be reviewed and approved on an annual basis?
The, the ordinance wouldn't be, but the, you could always put in the memorandum of understanding, having a yearly termination date and subject to renewal by the council.
Because we could, I mean, do a trial, let's see how it works. If we have, you know, a lot of clutter or safety issues, I mean, it isn't forever then.
At this time, you're looking for a green light to move forward with drafting some ordinance changes, and, and that would come back to a COW, and then it would need to go to council twice.
I know Mr. Cavato, he reminded me in our group last week, summer is short in Grand Forks. Thank you for that, Michael. But again, we want to have this be successful so that it can be multi-year, obviously with Mr. Veen saying, you know, we can have an annual review. So we would like to, if you give the green light, Dan would assign one of his staff members to get a draft ordinance in front of you for your review and move it forward.
These things are so much fun. It would be great to welcome the students back in August with, with scooters available for them.
If this city council wouldn't mind, if it worked out, if you wouldn't mind bringing, allowing us to bring it to the city council for the first reading, for, at the timing didn't work out, you would still have a second reading of it, but we would then pull it out of city council. I'm just saying, just in case we wanted to expedite it by a week or so, we'd go, we'd pull it, have a full discussion. If it's so, if you're so inclined to give a first reading, it'd come back in two weeks for a second approval.
Are you looking for a motion to, to move forward in that expedited fashion? I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? And a second? Ms. Dockler, did you have something?
So I just have a couple of questions, I guess. I love the fact that they would be of no cost to the city. That's always nice to hear. But I'm also wondering, for how long is that going to last? And then who's responsible for repairing them? We do not always have great weather, and like you said, our summer is quite short. What is the viability of using these in the winter? Or do they get stored, just like our bike system does, that we approved? And right now, if you look around town, we don't have our bikes out right now either, and that's because of supply chain issues and repairs. So is that going to be, I know it's a different company, but are we going to have the same kinds of issues? Again, I'm not going to lie, they're fun to be on, but the, the problems of having them laying around everywhere, having to know who's responsible for the financial upkeep of them, if people are driving them in the winter, people have a hard time using their blinkers, let alone driving on little scooters on the ice. And so that is concerning to me. I do understand, Mr. Weber, Councilman Weber, where you're coming from, where it would slow down hopefully some of the traffic, but I also live next to a school, and it doesn't slow down traffic necessarily. So I do think that these are some significant questions that I would have before I would even be willing to consider fast-tracking anything to a new oncoming council.
Yep. I would be happy to provide some information to address those questions. First and foremost, we're necessarily responsible for the financial upkeep of the system. We do not charge our city partners, and I use that in the colloquial sense, not in the legal sense. To be very clear, we do not charge our city partners for the provision of our services. What that means is the city will not incur any charges. In terms of the maintenance and supply chain issues, I think we are a substantially larger organization than the company providing the bike share system. In fact, I know that we are. What that means is that we have certain benefits in terms of the economies of scale and the warehouses that we have with parts. We do all the maintenance, all the repairs. Certainly, there's no, there's not been any significant issues since the very early days of COVID with our ability to maintain the scooters. You're right. I do think there would be some concern in terms of using these within winter conditions for that reasons. It would probably be about a three, three and a half season business. We have a process that we call hibernating the fleet, because our company name is Bird, and we use way too many animal puns. So we take all the scooters, store them in a centralized location, similar to what you're familiar with, with the bike share system, before bringing them out again when the weather is more appropriate. Because of the digital technology that we also possess, what that means is that if there is, for whatever reason, an unanticipated weather event, we can also digitally shut down the entire fleet remotely so that nobody's using them in unsafe conditions.
Yes.
Just a couple follow-up questions, too. And maybe this is Mr. Gostad and Mr. Phelan's arena more. I'm wondering, one, when we have individuals operating these Bird scooters who are under the influence, how does that fall? And then also, I am wondering, is this part of kind of connecting the university to downtown? Is there a specific, maybe I missed it, but is there a specific plan or map that has been mapped out? Obviously, it's on campus, but where else? We're trying to keep them off of Washington, and I get that, but how do they cross and connect to downtown, then?
I can answer the DUI question. There was a case in Bismarck where somebody got picked up on a bicycle and got a DUI on a bicycle. So I would, I don't, I don't know if there's been a reported case about a motor scooter, but it seems logical that if I can get a DUI on a bike, I can get a DUI on a scooter.
I would certainly support that. Certainly, it's what we've seen in most of our other communities. In addition, I do want to make sure that having people operate under the influence is something that we take very seriously. We actually built a feature that we call Safe Start. After a certain hour of the day, for example, say 9:00 PM, our users are required to pass a brief cognitive test just as an additional barrier to make sure that they're in okay state of mind before the scooters can be utilized. So one more barrier that we put up to make sure that only people in a decent state of mind are using the scooters. In terms of the connectivity, I know the word scooter has a bit of a frivolous connotation, but as I've said a couple of times throughout this evening, this fundamentally is a public transportation system. We see a large number of our users as individuals who might have a lack of transportation access for a number of reasons. Maybe due to low-income status, maybe due to a lack of bus routes near their, their home, et cetera. For that reason, we do want to make sure that we are expanding the operational zone as much as possible to encompass as many people as possible. Typically, I would suggest the jurisdictional boundaries of the community. I do think you'd run into some issues specifically within Grand Forks, but certainly the bulk of the city would benefit from being within the operational.